We start with apologies for absence to be announced by Debbie Vaughan. Debbie, are there any apologies for absence?
Chair, I'm at the back of the room today, so I'll project my voice and you can hear me. So I received four of the strong councillors, Phil Withers, Peter Edgar, Stuart Brinfield, Martin O'Neill and John Potts and the rest here.
Are there any other apologies? Good, thank you. Item two on the special council agenda meeting is relating to declarations of interest. All members who believe they have a disposable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting must declare that interest and having regard to part three, paragraph 1.5 of the county council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider, having regarded to part five, paragraph four of the code, whether such interest should be declared and having regard to part five, paragraph five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Item three relates to the minutes of the special county council meeting held on the 16th of July 2020. Having some difficulty finding that here. Right, are we comfortable with the minutes? May I sign them? Thank you. We come now to the main item for this agenda, which is the Honorary Alderman Invester to Chair and I call upon the leader, councillor Mayons, to say a few words about the four former councillors and about Honorary Alderman Chris Connor and intermove the recommendations. Councillor Mayons.
Oh yeah. Chairman councillors, I would like to present to the council the following former councillors for the title of Honorary Alderman. Roy Perry. Roy was a county councillor from 2005 until 2021. Before that, he was a former leader of Test Valley Council and a member of the European Parliament. He was deputy leader of the county council from 2008 to 2013 and leader from 2013 to 2019. Until recently, he was also chairman of South East England Councils. Peter Edgar. Peter was a county councillor from 2005 until 2021. He was a cabinet member from 2013 to 2017 and he was awarded an MBE for his public service in local government in 2019. Chris Carter. Chris was a county councillor from 2009 to 2021. He's a former chairman of the Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Authority and prior to that the Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority and was chief whip and secretary of the Conservative group on the county council for eight years. David Simpson. David is a former soldier and served as a county councillor from 2005 to 2021. He served on a number of committees during his terms, including the Children's and Young People's Select Committee and the Regulatory Committee. He was a member of the Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority for over 12 years and also represented the county council and number of outside bodies. Chairman, these are my recommendations.
This needs to be put to the vote. This needs to be put to the vote, so I can ask members to agree the recommendation.
Agree.
Thank you. In which case, I'm now going to ask each of the honorary aldermen to say a few words if they wish, beginning with a councillor, former councillor, Alderman now, Chris Carter.
Chairman, thank you. Can I, I didn't know which button to press here, but I think you can all hear me. Chairman, members, thank you indeed for this very special honour that you bestow upon myself this morning. I'm humbled to receive such an honour. It was a tremendous privilege for me to serve as a Hampshire County councillor. I was actually born in Winchester in a county council facility a very long time ago and my father had gone to college here. So he gave me some guidance about Winchester and Hampshire from a very young age and I can remember at my prep school when I spoke to the class about the significance of Hampshire and indeed Winchester and I think I told them at the time that I was born in the city where the king lived. Well, I was only about seven, I think, seven or eight at the time. So it was a real privilege for me to be a county councillor and it will be a significant honour and privilege to continue contact with the county as an alderman. I still have the bill, I inherited from my mother, the invoice from the county council and 10 days here, back in the 1940s, cost nine guineas. Thank you very much.
Alderman Peter Edgar, MBE.
Many thanks for being awarded as an honorary alderman. I have loved it as an eight Hampshire County council councillor for 16 years. Thanks to all councillors and officers for their support. Their help has been tremendous. My sincere thanks. Peter.
Alderman Roy Perry.
Mr Chairman, Councillor, thank you. I think I should start by saying, looking at you here, you may turn your papers over and begin. It looks as if I'm invigilating an examination. But thank you very much, Mr Chairman and Councillors, for the honour and distinction. There's something poetic in this, in that my local government career began way back in 1970 at a by-election, when the councillor who'd previously represented the seat was elected to the aldermanic bench. That was in the days when aldermen had real power and real votes and they were elected by fellow councillors for seven years. I won that by-election and so that was 1970, so here we are 52 years later. It's too long, was my view. I incidentally was at the funeral of our former colleague councillor Colin Davidovitz last week and the alderman whose place I took on the council was there wishing me well and keeping an eye on me. So you might see me around. So you might see me around for a long while yet, but I wish you all well in the very important work that you do and thank you for the honour.
Alderman David Simpson.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. What a great honour. 16 years and I finally get to speak without a time limit.
Not quite.
But as the chairman said, no speech was ever too short. This is a beautiful county and those of us who have ceased to be councillors have passed on to you the baton to keep it, not just a beautiful but a great county. Please keep the faith in making it a fabulous county. Over the years, I've amassed some good memories, some great memories with officers and councillors, very talented officers, inevitably a mixed bag of councillors because we come from all walks. But when you think of it, all we take into the future are our memories. Thanks for the memories, thank you.
Alderman Chris Connor.
Good morning, everybody, thank you. I thank you very much indeed for the honour presented to me and for the citation which of course was delayed because of Covid and all other little efforts we went through. In my first term, Portsmouth and Southampton were part of Hampshire, entirely different outlook on life and I experienced the delight of the first Labour Party female holder of the position of chairman. Her wish to be called that and not to be called chairperson or chair. She insisted the position was chairman and that was it. After then, I have been as a member of a small group of the Labour Party members for years and I was always aiming for acta non verba. Hence, when I was first offered the automatic role, I felt rather like Rani Artois when he was given the collaboration medal by the Nazis in Allo, allo. My fear was I would be expelled by my party. Being well aware of the government financial cuts and the fact of Nemo, Dat Quo de Nemo Habat, I wish you every success for the future and would make a real plea that you do not cut expenditure on the special schools music department, which I love. Thank you very much for the great honour, I appreciate immensely.
Thank you. That concludes this special county council meeting. The honorary aldermen, myself and to others, will now be going to the metro room for the photo opportunities and the other presentations of pages and so on. And so there'll be a break of approximately half an hour between this meeting and the next meeting, which will be our county council proper meeting, if you like. So if you can all be back here by that clock at 20:11, then we should be seated in time to start the webcast at quarter to 11. Okay, many thanks.
Starting the webcast. Once again, good morning. Thank you for your indulgence. Welcome to this County Council meeting. We start with the apologies for absence. I'm going to take those as read from the special council meeting we had this morning, but we have some that have been added in the last few minutes. So if I can find Debbie Vaughan, there you are.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to add the apologies of Louise Parker-Jones and Alan Dowden. Thank you.
Right, I'm required under the Constitution to read out again item two, the declaration of interest. All members who believe that they have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting must declare that interest. And having regard to part three, paragraph 1.5 of the county council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider, having regard to part five, paragraph four of the code, whether such interest should be declared. And having regard to part five, paragraph five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Item three, the minutes. So we start with the minutes of the 27th May 2021. And I'll read out the page numbers that appear on your agenda. Page five, page six, page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10, 11. All content with those? May I assign the minutes?
Agreed.
Thank you. Minutes of the meeting on the 21st of June. That was an extraordinary meeting. Page 13, page 14, page 15. May I assign those minutes?
Ready.
Thank you. Item four, deputations, the no deputations. Item five, chairman's announcements. I'm going to start with some of the awards the county has been made aware of since our last meeting. This month marks 50 years since Mavis Vernon, a registration officer, began her career with Hampshire County Council. She's a much admired and respected member of the team. Mavis has seen a great deal of change during her time with the county council and has always been a constant and positive influence to others throughout her career. Mavis is an example of someone dedicated to providing the best possible customer care and assistance to those who need it. And we would like to formally recognise and thank Mavis for her long service at the county council and the residents of Hampshire. And I was honoured to be at a presentation ceremony for those who'd had 40 years' service when we were able to give Mavis her certificate for her 50 years' service. The Hampshire Archives has met a national accreditation standard which recognises high levels of performance, including the care of its unique collections. Hampshire Library Service has been shortlisted in two categories in the library's connected national awards. The county council's catering service, HC3S, has been shortlisted for the 2021 food service, Katie's, as education caterer of the year. The Sir Harold Hillier Gardens, in July 2021, the Sir Harold Hillier Gardens exhibited at RHS Hampton Court. The exhibition was of the garden's national collection of hyperkium. The gardens were awarded a Silver Guilt Medal, which is excellent news, especially for the horticultural students who helped to design the exhibit as part of their practical studies. And in September, the Sir Harold Hillier Gardens also received a Britain in Bloom South Gold Award in the Parks and Heritage Garden category. In ETNE, Peter Barty has been awarded the British Empire Medal in the Queen's Birthday Honours List for services to charity and the community in Ferum. This is fantastic news for Pete and his family, and he's so well deserved. Many of us will be familiar with his amazing fundraising efforts for Macmillan over the years, and I think this is a brilliant recognition for what he has done for such a great cause and also a measure of his humanity. The county council's property services and children's services delivered a number of major student, sorry, a number of major school projects in time for the start of the academic year in September. Of particular note was the opening of Deer Park Secondary School near Botley. This project was the first all-new secondary school opened in Hampshire for nearly 40 years. And a new primary school building was also opened on time and on budget in Whiteley. Corniston Primary School, which is a Church of England diocese establishment, moved from its previous home in modular buildings on a nearby site to its new permanent location, providing additional places for pupils in the area. The project was funded by developer contributions and was designed and managed by Property Services. And then the new school building at Barton Farm on the outskirts of Winchester has been shortlisted for awards by both the Royal Institute of British Architects and the Civic Trust. Members will be pleased to know that at last it is permissible for me to represent you at civic functions. Recently, these
Once again, good morning. Thank you for your indulgence. Welcome to this County Council meeting. We start with the apologies for absence. I'm going to take those as read from the special council meeting we had this morning, but we have some that have been added in the last few minutes. So if I can find Debbie Vaughan, there you are.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to add the apologies of Louise Parker-Jones and Alan Dowden, thank you.
Right, I'm required under the Constitution to read out again item two, the Declaration of Interest. All members who believe that they have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting must declare that interest. And having regard to part three, paragraph 1.5 of the County Council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider, having regard to part five, paragraph four of the code, whether such interest should be declared. And having regard to part five, paragraph five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Item three, the minutes. So we start with the minutes of the 27th May 2021. And I'll read out the page numbers that appear on your agenda. Page five, page six, page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10, 11. All content with those? May I assign the minutes?
Agreed.
Thank you. Minutes of the meeting on the 21st of June. That was an extraordinary meeting. Page 13, page 14, page 15. May I assign those minutes? Thank you. Item four, deputations, the no deputations. Item five, chairman's announcements. Going to start with some of the awards the county has been made aware of since our last meeting. This month marks 50 years since Mavis Vernon, a registration officer, began her career with Hampshire County Council. She's a much admired and respected member of the team. Mavis has seen a great deal of change during her time with the County Council and has always been a constant and positive influence to others throughout her career. Mavis is an example of someone dedicated to providing the best possible customer care and assistance to those who need it. And we would like to formally recognise and thank Mavis for her long service at the County Council and the residents of Hampshire. And I was honoured to be at a presentation ceremony for those who'd had 40 years' service when we were able to give Mavis her certificate for her 50 years' service. The Hampshire Archives has met a national accreditation standard which recognises high levels of performance, including the care of its unique collections. Hampshire Library Service has been shortlisted in two categories in the library's connected national awards. The County Council's catering service, HC3S, has been shortlisted for the 2021 food service, Katie's, as education caterer of the year. The Sir Harold Hillier Gardens, in July 2021, the Sir Harold Hillier Gardens exhibited at RHS Hampton Court. The exhibition was of the garden's national collection of hyperkium. The gardens were awarded a Silver Guilt Medal, which is excellent news, especially for the horticultural students who helped to design the exhibit as part of their practical studies. And in September, the Sir Harold Hillier Gardens also received a Britain in Bloom South Gold Award in the Parks and Heritage Garden category. In ETNE, Peter Barty has been awarded the British Empire Medal in the Queen's Birthday Honours List for services to charity and the community in Ferum. This is fantastic news for Pete and his family, and he's so well deserved. Many of us will be familiar with his amazing fundraising efforts for Macmillan over the years, and I think this is a brilliant recognition for what he has done for such a great cause and also a measure of his humanity. The County Council's property services and children's services delivered a number of major student, sorry, a number of major school projects in time for the start of the academic year in September. Of particular note was the opening of Deer Park Secondary School near Botley. This project was the first all-new secondary school opened in Hampshire for nearly 40 years. And a new primary school building was also opened on time and on budget in Whiteley. Corniston Primary School, which is a Church of England diocese establishment, moved from its previous home in modular buildings on a nearby site to its new permanent location, providing additional places for pupils in the area. The project was funded by developer contributions and was designed and managed by property services. And then the new school building at Barton Farm on the outskirts of Winchester has been shortlisted for awards by both the Royal Institute of British Architects and the Civic Trust. Members will be pleased to know that at last it is permissible for me to represent you at civic functions. Recently, these were firstly the BM Award Ceremony, presented by the Lord Lieutenant of Hampshire, secondly a function hosted by the High Sheriff of Hampshire, also the Test Valley Civic Day, as I've said earlier, the 40 years-long service celebration certificate awards on the 21st of September, the Adults Health and Care Thank You Event, which really was a wonderful event on Wednesday, the 22nd of September, it was also held on the 23rd, and then I had a Chairman's Civic Day on Monday, the 20th of September. My civic day event was held at the newly refurbished and extended German house at the Hillier Gardens. This has been exceptionally well done by the county, the architects and so on, property services, and you should all visit the new dining facilities, where I can assure you the food is very good indeed. Now, it is with much sadness that I have to recall that former County Councillor Roland Dibbs, Councillor Sheila Stephenson, County Councillor Anne Bailey, former County Councillor Kingsley Williams, and alderman Colin Davidovich have all passed away. Roland represented the Farnborough South Division from 2017 to 2021. Sheila represented the Farnborough South Division from 1985 to 1993. Anne Bailey represented Downlands, now known as Winchester Downlands, Division from 1985 to 2005, 20 years' service. And Honorary Alderman and past Chairman Colin Davidovich represented the Chondasford Division from 2001 until his retirement in 2015. Now, I shall pause at this point for those who wish to speak in honour of any of these past members, and I will start with the leader, Councillor Manns, thereafter if you could put your hands up. Councillor Manns.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to pass on my condolences to all the families of those particular former councillors who've passed on. I didn't know Anne Bailey, Sheila Stephenson or Kingsley Williams, but I did know Roland Dibbs, as many of us did, as he only retired very recently. And I knew Colin Davidovich very well indeed. I attended Roland's funeral and I attended Colin's funeral. Colin was a really good, sound member of the council, and I think his main, he'll be remembered most for, is the introduction in the council chamber of our video feed and the audio feed, bringing us up to date, bearing in mind his previous experience in the media, and putting us very close to the front line when it came to the first councils that actually had the raw video feed on the internet. So he'll be sadly missed. His funeral was a very nice affair. There was a picture on the back of the card showing him with his, I think, four, could have been three, great-grandchildren. And that was a really lovely family picture, and it showed what sort of a family man he was. So as I say, a great loss, a great loss to us all for all those former councillors that served Hampshire well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I have the following councillors so far who wish to speak, councillors Collett, Porter, Chigwin and Harvey. Are there any others? Right, councillor Collett.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it's a sad day today that we have so many former members to remember, and I did know four of the five of them. I'd like particularly to talk about Sheila Stephenson, who represented Farnborough South from 1985 to 1993. I think most people in the room probably don't know Sheila, but some will. And those who did will know that she was a tireless campaigner for her constituents. If something needed sorting out, she would get to grips with it and she would not let go until it was either sorted out or proven that it couldn't be. She paid enormous attention to detail. She did her research, she did her homework, and anyone who found themselves challenged by her would know that they would be challenged thoroughly and they'd have to have very good justification for their position. She wasn't afraid of ruffling feathers, and I recall an occasion of a meeting of the police authority where she and I were challenging a senior police officer on a particular point. And astonishingly, in a public meeting, she was accused of being a woolly-minded liberal spouting nonsense, not the sort of thing you would normally hear an officer say. I'm pleased to say that senior management of the constabulary has dramatically improved since those days. But what was this liberal nonsense that she was spouting? She was suggesting that maybe we should consider neighbourhood watch being introduced in Hampshire. Chairman, Sheila lived and died by her values. She hated waste, she hated inefficiency, she hated things being ineffective. And in respect of hating waste, her husband told me the day after she died, when he informed me, he said, Sheila's wish was that there be no funeral, just a simple cremation and a scattering of ashes, anything else would be a waste. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Collett. Councillor Porter.
Thank you. And I'm going to be talking about Anne Bailey, who I replaced in 2005. She was born in 1939 on a farm, and her mother worked for Rag and Bone Man and her father was working for a paper mill, so recycling became part of her life from a very early age. But as a scientist, Anne also realised the value of the whole ecosystem, and she was passionate even getting her garden rewilded as she was in her later years. Anne was a really high achiever in ballroom dance as a gold medallist when she was a child, and then went on to do a physics degree from Manchester. And in fact, it was when we discovered that we'd both been at the same university, but not at different times, it was a really good bond between us. They moved to Hampshire because her husband got a job with IBM, but Anne started campaigning for better facilities for young people right from that day. And she taught first at Swanmore and then at other schools in Hampshire. Anne's election to the county council was momentous. She was elected in 1985. Her first election, she got one more vote than her Conservative opponent, so a rerun was called for. This time, she won by 1,231 votes. And that continued until I took over in 2005, when the division was carved up. Anne was a successful campaigner, and she campaigned, for example, for better sound buns around the M3 when the M3 was built in Otterbourne. When her division was carved up, Charlotte Bailey and I replaced her. Charlotte wasn't a relation, but lots of people thought she was her daughter, which was fascinating. But she did actually remain a campaigner till the day she died on her stroke, she had a fatal stroke in the afternoon, but had been campaigning about something in the morning. Anne was very popular in the community, and her funeral finished with a song which was one of her favourites, which was by Carole King, which was You've Got A Friend.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Chigwin. Thank you, councillor Chigwin. Councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to speak about Colin Davidovich. My memories of him are always, he's a proper gentleman outwardly, I thought he was brilliant. He was a good chairman, and as chairman, he was invited to my church, which is in the middle of a field that has got a steep hill before it. And it was in the evening, it was dark, and we'd arranged for him to go up the hill in a car. The car turned up. Him, Colin and his wife decided not to use the car and walked up this great big hill, which fortunately we had lit with candles on the way. But that was, he was that sort of person, no, everybody else has walked up, I will do it too. He was absolutely brilliant and a nicer person I could meet. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harvey. Councillor House.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few words about Colin Davidovich too. Now, you might say, why is councillor House talking about Colin Davidovich? They played for different teams. Well, very much so, but Colin was part of the Eastleigh team for many years, and so it's appropriate to say a few words. And Colin was a member of Eastleigh Borough Council for quite a few years before he was elected here. We always used to say at Eastleigh that Colin was the brains behind the outfit of Chondasford Conservatives, and he put me under more political scrutiny than probably any Conservative ever has at the Borough Council. And he did it with a mischievous glint in his eye too, because you knew when he was really just pulling the leg. And that was a side of Colin that perhaps hasn't come out so far. We were elected here on the same day in 2001. I remember going up to Colin at the counter, and again, with that mischievous glint in the eye, we both said to each other, we're going to have some fun, aren't we? Challenging at the county council, perhaps in our both ways we have done. Colin could also take the Mickey out of himself as well along the line, and that's something that's a bit rare in politics. He once stood up at a council budget meeting, moved an amendment, and he was holding the budget book upside down. Did we take the P out of him for that? We certainly did. But then he did too in subsequent years by purposely holding the budget book upside down. Colin could know the difference between politics and humanity, and we miss him.
Thank you, councillor House. I would just like to mention that I very much enjoyed working with Roland Dibbs when we both worked for the Hampshire Waste Services Arrangements and the old operation Integrus, it was called, I think, in those days. Roland took a very keen interest in waste management and waste disposal in particular, and recycling. And I recall the wisdom that he brought to those meetings. I'd also like to say a few words about Anne Bailey, who was on our education committee when I chaired it for many years. She certainly held us to account. She was very assiduous, in command of the detail, and a much respected councillor, and I remember her well. And then, of course, my good friend Colin Davidovich, that I served on the cabinet for many years with, who taught me much, whose patience, was always to the fore to ensure that no matter how people did not want something to be discussed, he would doggedly ensure that it was discussed, both in private cabinet meetings and in public cabinet meetings, and then, of course, as the portfolio holder in the council chamber, and subsequently as chairman, where he was a very fair chairman. So I think that all of these people, and those are just the three that I happen to know reasonably well compared to the others, but I have as much respect for them as well. So with that in mind, I'm going to ask us to make a bit of noise, I suppose, by doing this, but to stand and to bow our heads for a moment in silence in honour of these people as a mark of respect to them. Thank you. So we come now to item six, which is the Leader's Report. So councillor Manns.
Chairman councillors, I have over the past 18 months totally underestimated the time that COVID-19 has been with us. I did think by now we'd be back in the council chamber, but I have to say, I think this is the right venue, as this particular disease seems to be with us for much longer than we expected. And I hope you feel this is a good compromise between meeting online, which we're now not allowed to do, so it would have to be a quorum meeting or meeting in the council chamber. I know there are quite varying views as to what's best to do, and I hope you feel this is a good compromise, where we have much better facilities for fresh air in this building than we do over in the council chamber. Because although COVID-19 restrictions have been lifted, the virus is still with us, and the government has made it clear that there is now, more than ever, a focus on personal responsibility and caution. The county council's priority throughout the pandemic has been to keep Hampshire safe, and we will continue to do that. And I would urge all residents to ensure that they take up both doses of the COVID-19 vaccine and indeed the booster jab, which will be available quite soon. Continue with regular testing and take proportionate safety measures to look after themselves and others. I won't say anything more about COVID because I think we've had an awful lot of discussion about it over the last 18 months, but it is still with us, hopefully not for very much longer. I now like to turn to say a few words about the county deal. Now, during the summer, the Prime Minister, as you know, encouraged counties such as our own to express interest in a county deal, which mirrors to some extent the deal that's already available to combined authorities led by mayors. I think the feeling by the government was that combined authorities had gone perhaps as far as they could, and that the deal for areas such as ours that are more rural needed to be looked at. We expressed an interest just before the deadline on the 13th of August, after a few days deliberation, because that's all we had. And I just felt it was worth showing that interest, if nothing else before, nothing else, because levelling up, in my view, should all be about need and not geography. Yes, of course, there are a lot of large areas in the north that need levelling up, but equally there are some in the south, and there are some in Hampshire. And therefore, I think it is right that we make, our views known to the government, that levelling up applies to us as well, and therefore, any deal that has that as its centre should apply to our area. I'm pleased to report that what I would call now the Pan-Hampshire Deal, which consists of ourselves, our districts, our boroughs, the three unitaries, the Isle of Wight, Portsmouth and Southampton, is progressing at pace. We've had significant interest from ministers and support from any stakeholders, and I'm particularly grateful for the input of information from the boroughs and districts. And the Centre have encouraged us to work up proposals for a bold ambitious deal for the Pan-Hampshire area. That is my ideal. If we can do that, we will have succeeded. Early next month, we will share further detail about the opportunities for Pan-Hampshire and the proposals for a deal. This is evidence-based and seeks to gain greater freedoms and flexibilities that will, put simply, make things work better locally. In addition, we anticipate that we will seek more functions, powers and resources, from transport to skills, from health and social care to housing, which will make a noticeable difference to the lives of local people, helping to increase opportunities and improve lives. The county council has not made any decisions about what is needed, and I do stress that. Instead, we're using our position to facilitate Instead, we're using our position to facilitate the conversation and drive progress proportionately. A consultation is being designed, as I say, to be launched next month, to capture further views. And currently, we are hugely benefiting from the discussions with our partners and stakeholders in the public sector and businesses to elevate and understand local needs and opportunities. One of the big tasks we have is to come up with a governance model, which I know a number of districts and boroughs are very interested in, which meets our needs for a Pan-Hampshire deal, but is equally acceptable to the Centre. We may not succeed, but what I do know is the information we're already gathering is bringing the districts and the boroughs and ourselves closer together, which in itself is good for our residents. So even without a deal, I think the work that we've done and will continue to do will benefit the residents of our great county. So that's the position we are in at the moment. I will keep people as up to date as I can about how things progress. But I believe getting a bold and ambitious deal for the whole of Pan-Hampshire is a huge opportunity to take greater control over our own future and to level up the residents. And I stress this, this is a devolvement deal. This is not a government reorganisation. This is about devolving power and responsibilities and indeed generating income from new sources locally. I'm not interested in an agency deal where we're simply told this money for this purpose and we'll check how you get on. I'm interested in a deal that gives us the discretion that many other devolved authorities across the western world already have. I want to do everything possible to make sure we take this opportunity and deliver it together. Let me move on and talk briefly about Afghan resettlement. We were one of the first counties to respond to the need for this when the latter came down from the Secretary of State for what was then housing and local government. We welcome the government's efforts to support Afghans arriving in the UK who have fled their homes to avoid threats and persecution by the Taliban. Indeed, a lot of those Afghans supported our troops when they were in Afghanistan, and a lot of those troops came from our county. The Authority is determined to do all it can to give Afghan refugees the best possible help they need to rebuild their lives. We're currently coordinating support for a number of families and are working closely with districts and boroughs. And I'd like to give a particular thanks to our boroughs and districts' housing departments that have come forward with support. And particularly, I'd like to also thank the health and voluntary sector partners to ensure that all Afghan resettlement individuals receive everything they need. Indeed, I was touched by the wave of support and generosity expressed by Hampshire residents who've demonstrated how much Hampshire cares through their donations and efforts to make refugees feel welcome. So far, we've settled thirty families and we've got over a hundred and fifty... We have the opportunity to settle thirty families. In other words, we've got space to do that with offers that have come up, both from the public sector and indeed the private sector. And as I understand it, there are over a hundred and fifty Afghan refugees actually in temporary accommodation, which is run by the Home Office prior to them being permanently settled. The county council welcomed the recent funding boost announced by the Home Office and continues to feed information back to regional and national leads. I also used the opportunity at my meeting with Hampshire MPs last week to provide them with an update on the situation and our key asks from government. Let me now turn to balancing the budget. I'll be brief on this, because obviously there are financial items later on in the agenda. While Hampshire County Council is in a better financial position than many authorities due to its careful approach to financial planning, it continues to face a challenging financial landscape. This is a direct result of continuing pressures on local government funding and increased demand for core public services. But I have to say that after thirteen years of cost reductions to deliver cumulative savings of approaching, indeed over a point six of a billion pounds to date, it is becoming increasingly difficult to find ways of making deeper savings. I continue to press the government for a fairer and more sustainable solution to the financial pressures of local authorities, and in particular, shower counties, who face, and I take every opportunity to remind our Hampshire MPs, as I did last week, of the situation. We obviously welcome the government's initiative on social care, which has the potential of solving some of the least of our problems. But I think this is the first step in what is going to be a very difficult path to make certain that the finance that initially has been made available to the NHS actually is also available to us in the future. As we opened things up during the summer, I did try to take the opportunity of getting out of this building and indeed out of my own home, just to visit various things that were going on across the county. And I'm always regularly reminded, as at least two of our new honorary ordermen said, of that we're very lucky to live in a county such as Hampshire. And in this context, I recently opened the transformed Stoughton Country Park in July. And this was just such a moment. It was fantastic to see the results of this ambitious project, which I do encourage all councillors to visit when you have the chance, because it really is a marvellous park, beautiful views as well. Which was, the changes were made possible thanks to the generous contribution of the National Lottery Heritage Fund and the Big Lottery Fund. The visitor facilities have been much improved and the historic Georgian landscape revitalised. I'm sure that the makeover will ensure Stoughton Country Park will be enjoyed by visitors and its local community for many years to come. I was also delighted to be at the opening of the new garden restaurant at Germaine's House, which the chairman mentioned earlier. It's a wonderful addition to our spectacular gardens, and it's particularly pleasing that the much-loved family home of the gardeners founder, Sir Harold Hillier, has been given a new lease of life. I'd like to thank all the supporters of this inspiring project, and I would encourage all councillors, if you have the opportunity, to visit Hillier's. It is a really huge asset for the county, and the new facility at Germaine's House is, I think, going to be very popular. The chairman mentioned a number of awards. I will just add one. And that is that, as some of you already know, it was confirmed in July that the county council secured the gold award reaccreditation in the MOD's employment recognition scheme. Hampshire County Council is one of the first local authorities to sign up to the Armed Forces Cupment, which is a pledge to understand and support our Armed Forces community and has delivered a successful and comprehensive programme of work to deliver on this promise. And I particularly thank councillor Andrew Joy for the work he's done in terms of being the Armed Forces champion. In recognition of what we've done, the county council first achieved a gold award in 2016 as the first of only two local authorities to receive this level of accreditation. And I'd like to thank all the officers and indeed councillors involved in this project for all the work they've done. That almost finishes my report, but there's two small things I want to do before I finish. First of all, as some of you know, Deborah Harkin, our former Assistant Chief Executive, retired yesterday. I particularly valued the support I got from Deborah, particularly over the acute phase of the COVID-19 pandemic. She was always someone you could go to when you weren't quite certain who was responsible for the particular matter you had in mind. She was a fund of knowledge, and she pulled the whole organisation together in a way that was very useful to me and indeed, I think, everybody else. So she retired yesterday, and I wanted to make certain that I gave this very short vote of thanks to her for all the support she's given me over the past two and a half years. And finally, I would like to announce my intention at the next council meeting to propose three new honorary orderments. Two of them are former members of the cabinet of my predecessor. That they are former councillors Anne McNair-Scott and former councillor Andrew Gibson. And I'd also like to propose the former leader of the Labour group, Jan Frankham, as the third honorary orderman. And finally, before I sit down, I... Well, I'm sitting already. There you are. Eddie, no, absolutely right. Thank you, Rob, for letting it know. What I was going to say is, I've been watching with interest what's happened over the so-called fuel crisis. And I was taught very early on in my political life, never use the word panic. And when I heard that word used by my good friend, the Secretary of State for Transport, who I know quite well, my face dropped. I thought, how has he done that? How could he have fallen into that trap? I'd already decided the best thing that everybody should do in terms of refuelling was just refuel half your tank. That has the effect of reassuring you you've got some petrol to go and do your job. But it also literally halves the problem. And that means the problem goes away that much quicker. I'm certain he... I haven't written to him to say he should have done that, but actually, I really believe. I've never wanted more than on that occasion to actually be in the House of Commons to be able to say that to him personally. And that completes my report, Chairman.
Well, I'm not panicking, but could I ask that we open the doors at the back, please? So we can get some air. It's getting very stuffy in here now. If you open both sets of doors, please, and if we could put the air conditioner on to whatever power system it has to rate the fan. Thank you. We're going to have item seven, which is questions. But I just want to get the door sorted out so as don't cause an inconvenience to the people when they read their questions. Could you open that door as well, please? Yeah, I can remember Chris Witty saying to us that the big thing about being indoors is to ensure you've got proper ventilation. I'll make no apology for insisting on it.
Chairman, can we just interrupt them? I didn't hear councillor Malcolm Wade's apologies being given earlier this morning, and he did give them, I think...
I did hear that.
They were. I missed it. Thanks.
Okay, I think we can proceed now. Thank you very much for that. So on to questions, understanding order sixteen point one. And the first question I have is from councillor Andy Tree.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, you may stand if you wish to, if you prefer to stand when you talk, or sit as you prefer.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I will stand then. Thank you. Before I ask my question, I just wanted to say a few quick words with your indulgence.
No, I'm sorry. It's question time. It's not speech time.
Okay, no problem at all. I just wanted to thank fellow members for...
Well, if you'd like to read the question on the order paper.
No problem at all. My question to councillor Rob Humby, Executive Lead Member for Economy, Transport and Environment, is what is happening in the next twelve months in terms of any changes to the existing bus service that serves my electoral division of Whitehill, Borden and Linford? Thank you.
Councillor Rob Humby is the Executive Lead Member for Economy, Transport and Environment, and if you'd like to answer the question, councillor Humby.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and thank you to councillor Tree for your question. The county council's current bus contracts in Whitehill, Borden and Linford expire in October 2022. Well, in advance of this, the services will be reviewed against several criteria, including subsidy per passenger journey, numbers of passengers carried, contract costs, passengers' journey purposes, so employment, education and healthcare, such like, to gauge the value for money offered by the services. Following that review, a tender specification will be drawn up and issued to the market. And we've since, I think, you submitted your question fairly early on. We've since had a meeting on this, and I think you've had a lot more detail on it. But I'm happy to take a supplementary question, Mr. Chairman, if you so wish.
Councillor Tree, do you have a supplementary question?
I just want to thank the executive member. That question was initially put forward for the meeting. It was cancelled, and it is correct. We have said since met and discussed this. I do have a further question later on, but we'll wait till the second round of questions. Thank you.
And could I thank you for the brevity of your question? We have a situation which is creeping in, and I've been asked to mention it to all members, and I'm reminded thank you by councillor Tree's brevity, that the questions are getting longer and longer and longer, with long statements before you get to the point of the question. Now, that just takes up time. We only allow half an hour for questions, and all that's going to happen is that we're not going to get through all the questions if you keep putting such long questions before. So I have asked the officers, for the next council meeting, some of the questions may be returned to you so that you abbreviate them. Councillor Porter, your question.
Thank you, and mine was abbreviated. The impact... I'm asking, it's already been abbreviated by your officers. Councillor Humby, I'd like to ask you the question. The impact of the limits, one visit a week to the HWRCs and the booking system, seems to have resulted in many gaps of time, where smaller sites at least have been devoid of users. Could you provide me with the details of the waste tonnage collected and the percentages recycled over two months of the pre-pandemic system and the comparator month in 2021, suggested June-July 2019 and 2021, at both Alsford and Winchester HWRCs in Hampshire as an example?
Councillor Humby.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thanks councillor Porter for her very brief question. I would stand up, councillor Porter, because I can't really see you, but I think before others shout out, the saying wouldn't make much difference, so I'll remain seated. Thank you. The figures, which I'm happy to send you, councillor Porter, I could do, but there's an enormous amount of data that's sat behind this. So rather than try and read out a table of numbers in the meeting, which does illustrate the complexity of this issue, how even two sites in the same district area show different patterns to youth both pre and post pandemic. However, it is clear that the total amount of material presented is lower in the sample month suggested in 2021 than for the same months in 2019. And specifically for the two areas you mentioned, that's 25% at New Oxford and 16% at Winchester. However, monthly patterns do not match with increased material in July compared to June in 2021 at New Oxford, but a modest reduction between the same months in Winchester whilst the opposite patterns occurred in 2019. Stay with me. I will get there. I said it's complicated. In terms of recycling rates, again, there was a reduction in rates at both sites for the sample months. So in New Oxford, going from an average of 66% to 61%, whilst Winchester went from 92% in 2019 to 83% in 2021. Now, waste arisings, as you know, are highly seasonal. Particularly in summer, when you get a warm, wet period, will result in significant increase in green waste. The proportion of residual waste also increased during the pandemic, with some residents using HWRCs to deposit excess black bag waste that they cannot place in their curbside bin. The 2021 data also reflects the period just before the barrers were removed and capacity increased. Now, I'm very happy to meet up with you and provide that data much more clearly, hopefully, set out so that we can go through that and explain that in more detail, if you so wish, councillor Porter.
Thank you, and I'd appreciate that. May I ask myself a question?
Yes, certainly, councillor.
People in my division are really keen to recycle, so what... People in my division are really keen to recycle, so what measures are you taking to increase that declining recycling rate at our HWRCs? And can you assure me that the ability to make the choice to visit an HWRC on the day and more than once a week, and indeed, more than once a day, will be restored?
Okay, yes, thank you. So through the project in Kegra, which councillor Jan Warwick now sits on, we are working with all our districts and boroughs, and we all know we need to actually increase our recycling rates. So we are doing everything we can, working with our partners to do that. On the second part of the question, I might probably cover that in a later question from councillor Phil North, if that's okay, so I've got some data that I'm just looking at now, that I can answer in terms of the number of times you can visit and the frequency in terms of when you can book on the same day, if that's okay. And I can follow that up with that other data as well.
Thank you, I appreciate those two questions on a similar matter.
Councillor Chris Donnelly?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mindful of your comments earlier, I'll just read out the final sentence of my question. Following the mental health impacts of lockdown, would the lead member reassure the council that the issue has been identified across the departments with respect to young people, and that appropriate support will be in place to respond to the needs in schools and youth services? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Donnelly. So councillor Roz Chad is the Executive Lead Member for Children's Services. Councillor Chad?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to councillor Donnelly for your question. Firstly, I would like to pay tribute to the families, education settings and our children's services for their huge endeavours in support of wellbeing and resilience and good mental health in Hampshire's children and young people through such a challenging time. Social workers and other social care staff have also worked tirelessly to continue safeguarding children and their families over this challenging period. There has been an increase in the number of children being referred to the service, as well as a notable change in the complexity of issues being experienced by children and their families, including children experiencing poor mental health. The negative impact on some of our children and young people's mental health, and indeed, that of their families, is very much acknowledged. There has been a very good take-up of the opportunity for every school, college to receive training on wellbeing and good mental health as part of a national initiative. The rollout of mental health support teams in schools has now extended to a number of districts across the county. There is an ongoing training for senior mental health leads in schools and colleges, coupled with a strong focus on relationships, sex, health education curriculum to support children and their young people learn about healthy relationships and their own wellbeing. Furthermore, our holiday activities and food programme funded over 56,000 places for free school meal-eligible children during the summer holidays. These schemes reach a sizable proportion of children, with 92% of these places being booked. Children accessing these provisions benefited not only from physical activity and a healthy meal, but also from wellbeing support and will be able to be signposted to mental health apps and services when required. Colleagues within children's services continue to work closely and proactively across the department and with their partner services such as health, including CAMHS, to ensure wellbeing support is available for children and families that need it. CAMHS have invested in digital apps, increased CAMHS capacity and extended counselling support as a result of our select committee, as a result of this, that our select committee heard earlier in September.
Thank you. Councillor Donnelly, do you have a supplementary question?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm very grateful for that answer.
Okay, then I'll ask councillor Phil North to ask his question now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The booking system for the HWRC divides opinion. Whilst many people appreciate the certainty of not having to queue, others find it difficult to get the desired time slot or face the prospect of having to store DIY waste for a number of weeks because of the one visit per seven-day rule. Now, most of the COVID restrictions have come to an end, can the executive member inform the council what measures have been taken to increase booking capacity and what he's doing to find a solution for those who need multiple trips on the same day? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Humby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to councillor North for the question, and some of this will relate to councillor Porter's earlier question as well. The booking system was originally introduced as a COVID-19 measure in response to traffic and congestion issues caused by the queuing traffic at HWRCs, following the reopening of the sites with restricted parking to manage the number of visitors on site and to assure social distancing could be applied. I'll just add to that point, when we then opened them up, I'd just like to pay tribute to the staff there, because they took an awful lot of abuse prior to that, so it wasn't just an issue with the queuing and the parking as well, in terms of the dangers from the roads adjoining that, but we had staff actually driven into and abused and spat at and shouted at. So you can see now why that was so important, that we introduced those measures at the time. I mention that because it's so easy to forget what happened and why we did it at the time. And I'll carry on, Mr. Chairman. The system was successfully eliminated much of the queuing and congestion previously experienced and reduced air pollution on surrounding roads. We have received many compliments from the residents who say that it makes their visits more pleasant and predictable in terms of their wait times. I agree that the booking system should remain in place until March 2022 to manage customer demand to facilitate a controlled and safe HWRC operation as social distancing restrictions are eased, particularly over the upcoming winter period. This will also allow us to monitor the use of the sites and demand as we progressively remove the other limits on utilisation and make more booking slots available. Clearly, the safety of the site staff and customers remain our main concern, and we will evaluate things ahead of any decision related to the service beyond March 2022. The situation is reflected by many other authorities around the country, and we have adopted similar practice, and indeed, I've spoken to many of my opposites and colleagues and other authorities along the same lines. All Hampshire HWRCs have the temporary barriers removed by August, and there are now just over 72,000 slots available countywide each week, though clearly that will reduce as we move into the winter opening hours take effect on the 1st of October. We continue to monitor demand with a view to removing the one visit per week restriction, and I can now say we have looked at that and the details behind that and the data, and we hope to be doing that literally in the next couple of weeks, so that will increase, so that restriction will be removed. And then we will look at how we can actually increase the numbers of visits and the same-day booking as well, but that restriction will now be removed. So I've only just been told that information because we've been checking the data to understand that. So officers are also working on making the same-day bookings available at the sites to allow residents greater flexibility, which is what I think councillor North, what you're really asking from that point of view, and a trial is planned soon. In addition, the restoration by district councils of full collection services like green waste collections is an important factor in allowing residents to manage their waste and recycling materials. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Humby. Councillor North, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I take your points about the green waste collection, and the district authorities across the county do that very well, especially in Test Valley. But I just wanted to press you on the point you made about timescales, because I think you just said there that in the next couple of weeks, people can book more than one slot a week. When will they be able to book more than one slot per day?
So that will happen, the first part, you're quite right, will happen early now. We're going to analyse that data and make sure we fully understand that we have the capacity as we go into the winter hours as well. Once we do that, we will introduce it as soon as we possibly can. I understand some people still find that difficult, but we also need to remember that people having to think about their waste actually also helps drive down the amount of waste that is produced as well, so there's that to consider at the same time. But as soon as we can, we will do, councillor North.
The next question is from councillor Collett to the leader. Councillor Collett?
Thank you, Chairman, my question to the leader is, the balancing the budget consultation, which took place several months ago, included a wide range of options for people to comment on. At the previous meeting, I tabled a question to the leader, asking why residents of Hampshire were not also asked for their views on whether they felt that the government, and Hampshire MPs in particular, should be lobbied more vigorously for a better financial settlement for Hampshire to allow more important local, sorry, yes, to allow more of our important local services to be protected. The leader kindly responded to my previous question in writing, but did not really answer the fundamental question of why this option was not included for comment by our residents. I would be grateful if he would do so now.
Councillor Mans?
I'd like to thank councillor Collett for his question, and I'm sorry that he felt that my previous answer was so inadequate. I suppose what it comes down to is the question he's asking, we believe, is such an obvious one, to ask the government for more money, that most, almost every resident would think we should be doing that, so there's little point in asking it in the first place. So that's the reason we didn't pose that specific question. What we did, though, we did pose questions about a legislative change to a range of services. In other words, if we could do things that we thought would be better for the county, but in order to do that, there was the need for a legislative change, for instance, a charging policy for certain items, just to give you one example. But what I can, and hopefully this answer will assist councillor Collett just a bit, I'm rather hopeful of that at least, we are doing more lobbying than we've ever done before. I think that's partly because of COVID and the fact that we've had a lot of online meetings with MPs for all sorts of matters. But this summer, what I additionally did was set up a regular monthly meeting on Friday lunchtime every month, on a Friday lunchtime, where MPs were invited to come to the council and hear the latest information about what we were doing from lead members and from directors of services, and at the same time, put our points across about the things we were most worried about. And what you, I think, have to do is to try to align your concerns with MPs when you know that there is an opportunity in Parliament quite soon after that, where they can make a difference. So it's a matter of actually getting into the system in Whitehall and in Parliament to see what the roots are to make our concerns more relevant and more able to be met. So what I can say is, as a result of his original question, we are actually looking at better ways of lobbying our members of Parliament, and I think we're achieving that now.
Councillor Collett, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chairman, yes, I do, I'm grateful to the leader for his frank answer and his full answer, but I would ask, how many of our MPs are attending these meetings? Let's take the last meeting you've had, how many attended and how many didn't of the Hampshire MPs? And would he consider that maybe?
It's two questions.
Sorry? No, it's and.
One question, not two questions.
Would he consider that it's the almost total invisibility of the lobbying process that perhaps is allowing Hampshire's MPs and the government to ignore our needs, safe in the knowledge that the people out there are unaware that this is going on and that our MPs are being put under pressure? If people knew our MPs could be doing something about it, maybe they would feel under more pressure to do so. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, you make, councillor Collett makes a good point, you know, how you put pressure on MPs, I think there's loads of different ways of doing so, in fact, I've experienced most of them in my time in Parliament, I can assure him. The answer to his specific question, last Friday, five MPs turned up. Now, that's out of 14, now you may say that's low, but the whole point of having a regular meeting and reminding people, MPs' diaries change pretty rapidly, and I've found that by doing it on a regular basis, over a period of two or three months, you probably see most MPs, rather than set a specific meeting, say up in Westminster, where you still don't get a huge turnout. So I think it's smaller, regular meetings are the sort that I've said are a good way. And also getting MPs involved in some of the activities directly, for instance, the COVID-19, the COVID pandemic has allowed members of Parliament, myself and others, to be at meetings together where we can put points across. But I think the main way we do it as regards the Budget and Savings Programme is the way I've suggested, through regular meetings every month.
Thank you. Councillor Zoe Huggins?
Thank you, Chairman. My question is for executive member councillor Jan Warwick. With COP26 upon us, is it possible to have an update on HCC's progressing with their climate change strategy, with consideration of the recent climate emergencies such as flooding across the county and HCC's ability to prepare for, recover from and adapt our climate change resilience? Thank you.
The executive member for climate change and sustainability is councillor Jan Warwick. Councillor Warwick, would you answer the question, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and thank you so much, councillor Huggins, for your very relevant question. The first annual report, I'm pleased to say, on progress made on climate change will be presented to Cabinet in October, next month. The report will set out the progress that has been made on climate change over the past 12 months since the climate change strategy was approved in July 2020. The report is huge, it will provide an update on progress on embedding climate change across Hampshire County Council, the implementation of the action plan, including some highlights and case studies showcasing best practice in reducing emissions and building resilience across key sectors, and will provide more details of key programmes within the strategic framework. Updates on flooding, as you mentioned, are provided in the strategic framework appendix that will be appended to the report for Cabinet under the resilience section. The Cabinet report will also highlight that the focus for next year's climate change delivery will be on a year of resilience. With regards to COP26, I know interest is building in this, the County Council is hosting a two-day event at the Queen Elizabeth Country Park on the 29th and the 30th of October to coincide right at the start of COP26, which starts on the 1st of November. The 29th, the first day of our event, will be a business-focused day, whilst the 30th will be focused very much on our residents showcasing the work that Hampshire is doing with communities on climate change and helping residents to understand how they can act, both in terms of reducing their own emissions and building resilience. The County Council is also planning a community preparedness event on the 9th of November, which you might want to put in your diaries. Details are still being finalised, however, this event is being designed to help guide and support Hampshire communities to become safer, more resilient and better prepared for extreme weather events. We hope to have presentations from the environment agencies, from the Met Office, as well as our own teams, leading as the local flood authority, and of course, in emergency planning. And this event will help set the context of our work on climate change and will provide the launch for next year's focus. Thank you, councillor Huggins.
Can I ask my supplementary question, Chairman?
I'm about to ask you, you have a supplementary.
Thank you. Across Hampshire, many borough and parish councils have set themselves ambitious targets as has HCC. How will HCC ensure that there will be a systematic approach to influence and guide outside of HCC and work together to ensure impact proportionality, affordability and equability? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Huggins, I think that's a really important question, and it seems very relevant today after recent events in the news with the pandemic, with the effects of fuel and gas price rises. I'm really conscious that equality in climate change needs to be at the forefront, and I'm very aware that not everybody can easily work from home, can necessarily afford their fuel bills at home, and certainly not everybody can afford an electric vehicle. So I think the role for Hampshire County Council is very much as a leader, it's bringing It's bringing communities together. We host several different forums. One is something called the Climate Change Officers Group, and that is really important because that brings the boroughs and the district officers together, because that's the best way that we can reach all our residents with our strategies and community initiatives such as the greening campaign. We are a member of a group called the UK 100, that is rural local authorities that have a particular challenge, and that is really important as we refresh our transport plan right across our rural communities. And finally, we have something called the Experts Forum, and that's something we've brought together, the great and good of climate change, from the universities to businesses to the farmers via the NFU and the utility companies who've got so much to offer in their evidence base and their research. There's a fantastic project going on at the University of Winchester with the prison community, training prisoners to be able to take on jobs in the green economy when they leave the prison. So there's all sorts of stuff going on like that, but I'm really aware that obviously finance underpins all of this and being able to respond when a grant application opens from central government, as we did at the start of the year with our 29 million, which has enabled thousands of children across Hampshire to benefit from an upgrade in their schools. So thank you so much.
Well, we have one minute left, so just time to get in the last question from councillor Rupert Cole.
Thank you, chairman. Government has recently approved new badger culling licenses for Hampshire, as well as other new areas and extensions to existing culling licenses, despite committing to phasing out badger culling in favour of vaccination of cattle and badgers, including other measures to help reduce the spread of bovine TB. In September 2013, I tabled a motion to this council, which was overwhelmingly supported by members, stating that if badger culling was to be rolled out in the future in areas including Hampshire, that Hampshire County Council would not allow badger culling to take place on any of its county-owned or leased land, given that the science is not proven nor conclusive that the culling of badgers is the answer to eradicating bovine TB from the countryside. Will the cabinet member reaffirm this council's policy, as agreed overwhelmingly by this council in 2013, that no badger culling will be allowed to take place on any county-owned or leased land now or in the future? Thank you.
Thank you. The executive member for Recreation, Heritage and Rural Affairs is councillor Heron. councillor Heron, will you answer the question, please?
I will, chairman, and yes.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary?
Very quickly, if I may, no.
Thank you. That concludes questions for-
Very, very quickly, if I just may, that if we were being put under any pressure to actually change this policy, that we would strenuously lobby the Environment Secretary-
We don't need a statement, we just need a question.
It was the question that we would strenuously lobby the Secretary of State to not allow this to take place, and that any decision to do so would come back to this for council.
We understand the point you're trying to make. councillor Heron.
I noted the members' comments.
Thank you. That definitely concludes question time. So those members whose questions haven't been answered will receive a written reply, and that written reply will be copied to all members. Revert now to the main agenda, and we look for agenda item eight. This is on proportionality and appointments, and councillor Mans will introduce the report.
Thank you, chairman. This report simply brings the proportionality figures up to date, and in addition to the changes in the report itself, I've got four more changes which appeared too late to be printed with the papers, and I'll read those out to you. Councillor Michael Theory to replace councillor Steve Philpott on the Audit Committee. Councillor Karen Hamilton, Tess Valley Borough Council, to fill the district borough co-opted member vacancy on the Health and Adults Social Care Select Committee. Councillor Michael Hope of Rushmore to fill a similar vacancy on the Health and Wellbeing Board as a substitute member for councillor Anne Crampton. And finally councillor Steve Philpott to replace councillor Brad Baines as the county council's representative on the Solent Forum. That's different to that one. That's what I was given. Yes, all right, and there's an additional appointment. Councillor Kim Taylor to replace councillor Jackie Tuskain on the Health and Adults Social Care Select Committee, and that councillor Tuskain becomes the second Labour substitute member. Thank you, Debbie. And I'm asking the council to approve the proportionality table in Appendix One with the additions that I've just read out.
Good, so the recommendation is that the county council approves the draft proportionality table Appendix One and the appointments set out above. Please raise your hands if you agree with the recommendation. Thank you, ladies carried unanimously. Agenda item nine, the appointment of the Chief Financial Officer. Again councillor Mans.
Chairman, this again brings proceedings up to date. Previously, the Director of Corporate Resources was our Chief Financial Officer. Carolyn Williamson is now the Chief Executive. By statute, we have to have a Chief Financial Officer, and therefore that expand, this particular item expands the role of the current Head of Finance to be re-designated as the Director of Corporate Operations and Chief Finance Officer. And I'm asking the council to, I'm asking the council to recommend that that happens.
Thank you. The recommendation is that the county council approve the appointment of the Director of Corporate Operations as the statutory Chief Financial Officer of the county council. Could you all raise your hands if you agree with that recommendation? Thank you. Agenda item 10 relates to the changes for the independent persons on the Conduct Advisory Panel. I'm going to ask councillor Tom Thacker, the Vice-Chairman of the Conduct Advisory Panel, to introduce this report and to move the recommendations. councillor Thacker.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, to bring this report on behalf of the Conduct Advisory Panel to council to approve the appointment for four years each of Mr Michael Cronin and Mr Peter Moore as our independent persons. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any debate? Now that I put the recommendation that the county council approve the appointment of Mr Michael Cronin and Mr Peter Moore as the independent person for the four-year period of office expiring on 31 July 2025, please raise your hands if you are previous. Thank you. That's approved. Agenda item 11 is a constitutional update to be introduced by the leader councillor Mans.
Thank you, chairman. This update is caused by the change in legislation, which first of all allowed certain numbers of meetings, or all meetings, to be held online, but as some of you know, the actual statute itself had a sunset clause, which meant it came to an end on the 7th of May of this year, which is one of the reasons we held the AGM at the AGES Bowl. What this particular paper does is simply brings everything up to date, indicating those meetings we can have online and those meetings we have to have in person. And I'd just like to ask the council to approve it.
Thank you. councillor Collett, I think you're going to make the obvious point, aren't you?
I don't know what the obvious point is. I'd like to, first of all, say that I commend the leader's comments in his statement earlier on today about moving the meeting today to this room. I think it was absolutely the right thing to do, and it's actually a very good venue for council meetings. There's room to spread out our paper, it's much more comfortable. I support the recommendations here in item one. Are you going to deal with item two separately?
No.
Okay, in which case I'd like to ask a question on item two. I again welcome clarification of how things should work, so that's a positive, but I am struggling to understand why it's necessary for an elected member of the county council who wishes to come to attend a decision day or a meeting to raise something on behalf of their constituents or the people of Hampshire, to have to give notice the day in advance that they wish to do so. It seems an unnecessary obstacle being placed in members of all parties in their way. Also, the need to book a parking space these days is just making the life of members more and more difficult. So I'd like to understand why that's necessary, chairman. Thank you.
councillor Mans?
I think the best way I can answer that, councillor Collett, is I think it is a courtesy to let the chairman of committees know that you want to speak. I think the time limit is perfectly reasonable, but of course, chairmen do have the discretion to waive that if they wish. But what I think we need to avoid is a situation where a councillor asks to come to a meeting literally minutes or half an hour before it with a particular point, where I would say it's good manners to ensure that at least the person running that committee has an opportunity of checking that particular part of the item. So that's the reason for it. It's not designed specifically to stop councillors from quite legitimately asking questions about concerns expressed by their constituents, but I would argue what we've done here is simply tidied up the situation so people know what it is. But as I say, there is that element of discretion as well.
And I've asked a question, I'd just like to make one comment of debate, and that is to say, I don't have a problem with tidying this up, I think that's a sensible thing to do, and would the leader agree with me? It might be sensible to put a reference to the chair's discretion that he mentioned in the constitution when the wording is agreed.
Yes, I'm happy to do that. What I don't want to see, though, is that discretion is taken as a precedent for it always being provided. I think it's got the test of reasonable modernness is the one I think both sides should adopt.
A chairman of a meeting always has discretion. And I thought the obvious point of it, I thought the obvious point you were going to make was that it's absolutely ludicrous that we're not able to have modern technology used for our meetings through Zoom or MS Teams or whatnot, and that we have to come at times of climate change, transport difficulties and so on. I mean, I just can't believe the stupidity of government that hasn't- Sorry, that was the point that I thought you had to make.
I'm glad you made up for me missing it, chairman.
Right, well, so the recommendation is that the county council and its paragraph A and paragraph B, and would you please raise your hands? I'll take the two together. Thank you. Come now to item 12, which is the end of your financial report. This will be introduced by councillor Keith Mans.
Thank you, chairman. I will be saying a few general statements about this report, but I will also be asking my cabinet colleague councillor Steve Forster to also comment in more detail where he thinks it's appropriate to do so. I think the main point I'd make about this is this particular report covers what was, if you like, the acute phase of the Covid-19 emergency. We were very careful and conservative about what we thought was likely to happen financially, and the reason for that was pretty simple. We didn't know what funding was going to be available from government. It came in dribs and drabs. It had different criteria to each funding pot as to exactly how it was allocated to different councils. We also didn't know how much of the precepts, both business and council tax, we were likely to get in, because some individuals would clearly be, have difficulty paying it if they were affected by the pandemic. And of course, the pandemic itself affected our ability to carry out the last savings programme in the time specified. What actually happened in practice is the government have been pretty good at providing the money we needed last year, but there is no guarantee that the ongoing effect of Covid will be fully covered by government. And more specifically, the adult social care in terms of continuing healthcare and the ability of the NHS to support us in the re-ablement and the ability to get particularly elderly patients out of acute hospitals more quickly, has had a fairly dramatic effect on the plus side to the figures. So the figures are as they are, but what we're now going to do is use some of that flexibility we've got to ensure that we can cover the savings programme over the next two years, so it will probably get stretched out a bit more than it otherwise would have been, and also take into account the fact that the deal we've got over social care last year is going to be continued. It seems to be being continued at sort of quarterly intervals. There are a number of other packages at 1.6 which I won't go into, but they are fairly self-explanatory. So the report stands as it is. It's a good financial report. It shows that we've lived within our means. It shows that we've been able to do the things we needed to in terms of the Covid-19 effect upon us last year. But I do enter an element of caution that this year is also going to be difficult, and it's not at all clear whether in fact we will get the same amount of support as we did last year from central government. Indeed, the social care reforms themselves indicate that once again, sadly, acute hospitals are going to be put at the queue, and when we start getting some of that social services funding to us, I think it's going to be sometime in the future. So I commend this report to the council, and I will ask my colleague councillor Forster if he wishes to add anything to my remarks.
councillor Forster, you're sharing time with the leader.
Thank you, leader, for handing this to me. As you said, we have an increased demand in services. We've already delivered 0.6 billion of efficiency improvements, and stress that we are pressing government and MPs and anyone who'll listen for increased funding. That was successful last year, and as you've just said, we hope that will continue. The county deal may also give us some further opportunities if that proceeds. The paper shows Hampshire's overall spend and overall budget has increased, and that we're focused on prioritising key areas and efficiencies, often through making investment to secure subsequent savings, i.e. on digital. A lot of those funds that we're saving elsewhere are being prioritised onto adult social care and children's services, which are increasingly in demand, sadly partly attributable to Covid, but not all. Our reserves, most of which are earmarked, are being used wisely, including delivering over £10 million of interest yield. We're investing some funds from the upsides we've secured, from the underspend, in areas such as highways, Covid recovery and proactive property investments. That's good news. Significantly, our overall capital spend is a record figure of £214 million. It is challenging, but we're using those monies wisely, and we're in a fortunate position when compared to some other councils like Croydon, Northampton and Slough, who've had difficult periods. As stated, it's been an unusual year, but thanks to our approach, we're in a good position, as can be, and I therefore commend this report.
Thank you. Questions and debate? councillor Chigwin? I'm sorry, not councillor Chigwin, councillor Cooper.
I'm not sure whether I'm fat or not. I had confusion, Chairman.
My apologies. It's usually councillor Chigwin who puts his hand up.
I think the hair gives it away. Tim, I want to just comment on page 30, and it's paragraph 1.6, item 8, to thank the county for progressing this. It's been on the agenda for a very long time. It's a junction improvement in my division. It is funded by section 106 money, and of course, that's one of the unfortunate things these days, that virtually any improvement and change has to come from development. And development is a difficult thing to sell to one's constituents. Nevertheless, it does need doing. I also would like to thank the officers involved who have amended the plans just recently with my involvement to include additional footpath alignments, which will help six formers going from Ronzi to Peter Simmons. So again, I do appreciate that being included in the current plans.
Thank you. Any other councillors which speak? Right, then we'll... Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Crawford?
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to raise the issue, it's page 46, paragraph 84, about the £100,000 towards the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. And I wonder if there might not be another source of funds for that rather than drawing on the council's reserves. And the reason I'm asking this is that last Saturday in Rushmore, we had a tremendously heartening event where we had the unveiling of the Gurkha statue. And this was fundraised by the Gurkhas and the Nepalese in Rushmore with the involvement of the Deputy Lord Lieutenant and the leader of Rushmore Council. And they raised an excess of £150,000 in order to fund that statue. And it did seem to me that perhaps that a similar kind of appeal to the people of Hampshire, led by the leader of the council and the Lord Lieutenant, might recognise the tremendous dedication and service of the Queen on this jubilee, rather than drawing on the county council's reserves. So that was one question. Another question about another matter, if you wish me to put that now?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Jim. This is on page 75, paragraph 36. And this concerns the statement that the county council benchmarks its performance of its investments against other Arling Close clients. Now, I had the experience of this at Rushmore Borough Council when I served on the Licensing Audit and General Purposes Committee. And I spotted quite early on that Rushmore was about halfway down the table. And I said, well, why aren't we at the top? Can't you be talking to Arling Close to make sure that the recommendations that they put to the council lift Rushmore up and we get greater return on these investments? And as a result of that, we had a new head of finance came in, and he did exactly that. And I'm pleased to report that for at least two years, Rushmore was at the top of this chart. So I wonder where Hampshire is placed on this chart and whether measures could be taken for discussions with Arling Close to improve the return on investments. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Maynes, do you want to deal with this?
Yes, let me deal with the second one first. Thank you for that information. I'll make certain someone writes to you to give you the position we are on the chart because I haven't got it to hand, if that's all right. As regards the first point, I think it's a perfectly reasonable one. I think there'll be a number of, there's going to be a fair amount of finance that is raised for the Platinum Jubilee by different organisations. Your point is really, should we actually simply raise money from other people or support something ourselves? I think the way I'd answer that is we're already looking at some of the things we might like to do. And I think in order to do that without fully knowing what other finance will be available, it's right that we make this contingency available for that. The sorts of things I'm thinking of is if a particular parish, for instance, wants to do something, it may well be that they need a bit of support from us to do it for a particular purpose. And I think it's right that we have that ability to support organisations across Hampshire, including what we do ourselves, to make certain that we celebrate this really unique event in a proper way. But I take his point that we should also ensure that we fund as far as we can the celebrations from voluntary sources, as it were, from people raising money locally. I will certainly mention his point to the Lord Lieutenant when I next meet him.
I have councillor Collett and councillor Reed. I don't think anyone else would just to speak.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to pose the thought, this isn't a question, it's a statement, I presume we're on that stage. I'd just like to pose the thought, and maybe it's a question, that if, for example, the National Health Service had increased costs of £20 million in a year, and the government of the day said, we're going to increase their budget by £10 million. We're spending more than ever before. It's still a cut of £10 million in its capacity to do what it needs to do. So I think we need to be very careful about talking about the overall scale of our budget being more than it was when we know the reality is our capacity is decreasing. And I look back in just recent years to a time when we used to design bus networks for the needs of the travelling public. Now we design them to fit within the budget that's allocated to them. And the needs of the travelling public is a very poor second consideration. I look at the youth service, it doesn't exist anymore, and the accredited community safety offices that used to cover the whole of Hampshire and have now gone. There are plenty more examples than that. So I think we need to be careful when we claim that everything is growing.
I think that was straightened out. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. I think there are three points which have come up. And one of them, ironically, I'd been thinking of just pulling my hand up before. To what councillor Collett just said, I keep giving this mantra that you don't measure a service by its inputs, you measure it by its outputs. And just saying how much you're spending on something is not the answer. It's got to be what you're getting in terms of value for money for what you are spending. And we shouldn't forget that. I think councillor Crawford's question about the £100,000 for the Jubilee, good question, but I think councillor Maynes gave the right answer. Let's do both. We do get measured as councillors. If people say, well, look at all these things happening all over the country and nothing's happening in Hampshire, we would get measured by it and people would complain. People do want to celebrate good news, and the Jubilee will be good news. And I think it's right that we make a provision. But crowdfunding is a perfectly good way of raising money as well. And the answer that the leader gave is correct. Let's do both. And then the other question that was raised was about the being top of the league of investments in terms of return. I always get nervous about that logic. If the return on investment is a measure, is a return that demonstrates the amount of risk that you have taken, and the more risk you take, the greater the return you're likely to get. And that has manifested itself in some areas, in councils investing in property, not for planning reasons, but for returns, retail property in some cases. And my goodness, I think they have a problem now after what has happened as a result of COVID. So going for the top of the league is not necessarily a good thing to do if it gets the balance wrong between risk and return. And what this paper has demonstrated, I think, is that we have got this balance correct and that we haven't necessarily gone to be the top of the league, but we have balanced out the returns against the risks. And you will see that the returns we were getting from our pooled investments, they went down in value when COVID hit and have now recovered. And we continue to get the income from those. And that, I believe, has demonstrated that we made the right decisions in the past in going for pooled investments and that we are dealing safely with the money that is entrusted to us by the residents of Hampshire. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Councillor Porter?
Thank you. I just wanted to say 2021 was a really difficult year. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we are very grateful to all of our Hampshire County Council officers in children's services and all of our staff in schools at whatever level they're working, from the lady taking the money for the school dinners to the one serving it, to the head teachers, of how hard they've worked in last year. The funds allocated by government were resourced and allocated really quickly. I'm really grateful to the officers for doing that, too. The school transport budget wasn't called upon so much in 2021, mainly because a lot of children did not attend school, and so their parents didn't regard this as the priority. But the pressure on the children looked after budget and the school's budget, including the high needs block, as described in this paper, shows the continued pressures necessary. And I do urge you to continue to lobby, not just our MPs, but our Chancellor, too. The head in the sand attitude to those two issues in particular really must be addressed in future offers that we will make by government. I really urge you to make sure that our officers have the best means possible to deliver the best for our children in Hampshire.
Thank you. Point well made. I wouldn't want to inter debate, but I just want to say that don't forget that many of our care workers in nursing homes in the early months of COVID were exposed to all the dangers without adequate PPE. But nevertheless, those county officers did their job in such an exceptionally good manner. And of course, I was privileged to say thank you to them last week. But just remember that when we were running away, they were going into the danger zone. If there are no other speakers, I put the recommendation to you. It's on page 30. Again, I need you to raise your hands if you are in approval of the recommendation. Thank you. That is carried. We come now to item 13 on the agenda, which is Serving Hampshire Strategic Plan and the Corporate Performance Management Framework. And that will be introduced by councillor Stephen Reed.
Right, thank you, Chairman. The major part of this that I wanted to comment on by way of introduction is the Performance Management Framework. For new members, we used to have a system internally where we asked the department heads and the heads of disciplines to mark themselves. And we used to get some very good responses on that, and very frank and very objective ones. But the danger is always there that if we get a good response and it's coming out well, that people will say, well, they would say that, wouldn't they? So we have switched over the last few years, as much as we can, to using external metrics. And what do other people think of how we're doing? And that approach is serving us well. But we are making some amendments this time. We have got new additional elements that are going to be included in the Performance Management Framework. And they're included from paragraph 40 onwards. And the first one is the Narrative on Climate Change Strategy. We have resolved as members that we should think about climate change in everything we do. And one of those things that we do is to measure our performance. So there is a description there of how we are going to incorporate our thinking of climate change into our performance strategy. Then there is the Hampshire 2050 Commission. The 2050 Commission came up with a superb report. But the danger with reports like that is that they go on to the bookshelves and never get read again. So we are incorporating the recommendations that they have made into our thinking when it comes to performance. We are also including the Director's Performance Assessment, where we will give some thought to how well the individual directors are performing in their roles. And I think that is important as well, especially as we've had considerable change in our corporate management team over the last few months, contingent on John Copland having left and then Carolyn Williamson having been promoted to the chief executive position. So the recommendations are that the Cabinet or the council approves the Corporate Management Performance Framework and approves the Serving Hampshire Strategic Plan for 2021/25. So I'm delighted to introduce that, and I hope that the council will find favour with this report. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Todd?
Thank you, Mr Chair. First of all, can I say that I strongly welcome the strong commitment to include climate change in how the council does business? I know that when I proposed the Climate Emergency Declaration, it was my hope that it would be integrated into every aspect of how the council does business. And it's very good to see that this is in progress. In terms of the Serving Hampshire Strategic Plan, I have a few questions which relate to the difference between the attached strategy and what's written in the Cabinet Report, where the language isn't the same. So under outcome one, if you see, for example, in Cabinet Report, paragraph 12 and paragraph 13, it talks about a strong and sustainable economic growth and prosperity. And in the attached strategy, it talks about strong and resilient economic growth and prosperity. Now, personally, I favour the sustainability word. I think it's, for reasons I will come on to later. Outcome three, it talks about Hampshire enjoying a rich and diverse environment in paragraph 12, sorry, paragraph 13. But in paragraph 12 and in the attached strategy, it rightly changes it to people in Hampshire enjoy a rich and diverse environment, which is a good thing. And outcome four, there are actually three different versions in front of us. There's paragraph 13, Hampshire enjoys strong inclusive communities. Paragraph 12 says people in Hampshire enjoying being part of strong inclusive communities. And then in the attached strategy, it says people in Hampshire enjoy being part of strong inclusive, resilient communities. So it would be useful to know exactly what we're being asked to agree. I'd also point out on page two of the council strategy, paragraph five, there's a decision to be made where it says the words green slash sustainable question mark. And obviously, the final decision as to which word was going to be written in has not yet been made. And the council resolution unfortunately doesn't resolve this dispute because it says, with reference to the report annexed to this council report, councillors recommended to approve the Serving Hampshire Strategic Plan. So we're asked to reference one set of words in agreeing another set of words. So I'm not entirely sure what we're being asked to agree. Coming back to outcome one, we do actually need the word sustainable in there. Because without it, there is nowhere to put what we are doing on waste and recycling. Because we don't particularly do that for environmental reasons, we do it for sustainability reasons. And indeed, I did a search on all the documents we've been sent for the words waste and recycling. And they don't appear anywhere. So they're nowhere in the paper at all, even though it is a, as a disposal authority, it is one of our core priorities. So what I'd like to propose as an amendment to the recommendation in order to put it in, under outcome one, assuming it uses the word sustainable, that we add a priority of reaching at least average recycling levels versus comparable county council disposal authorities. And the reason I put that in is that the metric that the government uses to assess how disposal authorities are doing shows that Hampshire has the lowest recycling rate of any county council in the country. Now, I recognise that that is not a unilateral failing. And it is a product of how the county and the districts have worked together on the recycling system. But I do think it would be useful for the county to take a lead and be explicit in its plan within the lifetime of this to set an ambition to improve the situation, to take a lead in wanting the system to change. So my proposal, I will leave it to Cabinet to tell us which version of the wording we're actually being asked to agree. But I do think we need reference to recycling in there, and would therefore ask... to recycling in there and would therefore ask that this amendment to the recommendation be agreed.
I've got councillor Glen next, but I'm going to just ask councillor Reid to answer this question and discuss this first before we lose track of it. And then councillor Glen. I have no other speakers.
This is very interesting. Gosh, I wish that councillor Todd had been able to make these points at the Cabinet meeting because that would have saved an awkward situation here at full council. Now, I'll tell you what my feeling is on full council. Without in any way disagreeing with the sentiments behind what councillor Todd is saying, I really don't think it's right that we do this in committee of 78. So I think what would be best is that we approve this strategy paper. But the valid points that councillor Todd has asked us to discuss could, with the leader's permission, be taken to the Cabinet meeting next, and we could then discuss them there. But let's get on the table the strategy paper that we have and not try to wordsmith this with a full council meeting, which I think would be impossible. And I think, Chairman, you would thank me for that as well. So what I'm basically saying is, I think we should not approve the amendments today. And if councillor Todd would be willing to withdraw them so that they can go to Cabinet and be considered there, I think that is much the practical way of doing it. But if councillor Todd forces it to the vote today, I would regrettably recommend to the Council that we don't approve them in full council, but we do allow the Cabinet to consider them in a more leisurely pace.
Councillor Maynes, Leader of the Cabinet.
Yes, I just want to support what my colleague said. Councillor Todd, if you want to do this, I would be very happy to accept the fact that you'd like to come to the next Cabinet meeting. And you will have obviously then be given the opportunity to speak and make those points then. Apart from anything else, if we go down the route of amendment, you know quite well that we then have to adjourn proceedings, we then have to formally do that. I think a quicker and better way of getting at least some of what you want on board is by the route that councillor Reid has suggested.
Councillor Todd?
Thank you, Leader. So, Mr Chairman, I would be more than happy to come to Cabinet to discuss this particular amendment and the clarification of the language if I can receive reassurance that a particular amendment on recycling will be on the agenda. Because obviously, I'm not in a position to add it.
The Leader of the Cabinet?
Yeah, yes, is the answer. But that does mean it has to come back to the Council next time around, as long as you appreciate that.
Very happy, very happy with that. Thank you.
All right, councillor Glen?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'd like to thank councillor Reid for his very clear comments on the Serving Hampshire Strategic Plan, in particular, his comments on the 2050 Commission, or better known as the Vision for 2050, which was, if you recall, the brainchild of Alderman Perry. We had a look at it on the Policy and Resources Select Committee when it first came out, before it went to Cabinet. And I have already given instructions to our officers that we will look at that again as soon as possible to see if there's any changes or improvements we should make to it. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Right. I know I have councillor Collett, councillor Taylor, councillor House, councillor Crawford. Could I draw a line under it there? Okay. Thank you. Councillor Collett?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to raise a point which I raised at the Policy and Resources Select Committee about the strategic plan. And that is, and it's in no way critical of anything our officers have done, who I think have done an excellent job of pulling together proposals for us to consider. But where has the member involvement been in drawing up this plan? Not agreeing it, that's what we're being asked to do today and what Cabinet were asked to do. But where was the member involvement in drawing up what ought to be in the plan? It seems very odd that we're presented almost with a fait accompli and asked if we want to make any minor amendments to it, when it really ought to be something that the members of the county council own.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor and councillor House. And then I'll ask councillor Reid to answer some of those questions. Councillor Taylor, yes.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just say first of all that I do think that using external benchmarking is a very good idea. Most modern corporate organisations would expect to do that. Also, it's useful to consider at some point in the future internal benchmarking, where you share internal best practice, although I'm sure that does go on. I have two specific questions which really relate to the inclusion of new elements in the performance management system. The first is the one that's mentioned in paragraph 40 on page 99, which says that there will be a narrative on climate change included. But it seems to me from the wording that that's only going to be an annual narrative. And I am concerned that we would only be doing that narrative annually instead of perhaps quarterly. So I'd really like to understand the reasoning behind that. And secondly, in paragraph 45 on page 101, it talks about the tools that we will use to assess carbon emissions and resilience impacts on projects and discussions. But paragraph 46 goes on to say that they would only be used in relevant projects. And so I was really wondering if I could have an explanation of what would be considered relevant to use these tools for and irrelevant. Thank you.
Thank you. Made a note of that. We'll come back to your note in a few moments. Councillor House?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. It's hard to disagree with anything that's in the strategic plan. It's got high level objectives and there's quite a lot of things that broadly, probably every council in the country would want to sign up to. What I'm not clear on still, despite the comments that we've had this morning, is where the targets are going to be, how we're genuinely going to measure them and monitor them, and how we're going to therefore refine them and change them and move them on as time goes by. None of that detail is here. As I say, what's here is fine, it's nice words, but it's quite high on rhetoric, it's quite high on almost bland ambition. Without that detail, there's little point to it. We talked about the Performance Management Framework. Are we going to get that back here for Agreement Two? Because that's an important part of how you make the planning cycle work. And it's typically not here at the moment.
Okay. Again, that's another point which will be covered by councillor Reid in his summary. Councillor Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to follow on from councillor Kim Taylor, this idea of climate change strategy. I know I'm relatively new to the county council, having just been elected again in May. But watching Greta Thunberg this week and her castigation to the World Youth Climate Change Conference saying blah, 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 that's all we hear from politicians, I did feel guilty. Because it seems to me that saying that we're aiming to be carbon neutral by 2050 and the other target of mitigating strategy to mitigate against a two degrees centigrade temperature rise, there are examples of things that are long term and don't meet the immediate sense of emergency that was spoken about earlier as being what was adopted by the county council and indeed many other councils in the country as being essential to adopt for the future. So the idea that we should be seeing what should be done under performance monitoring, I think is excellent. But I do agree that we need to step up the pace if we're going to meet the aspirations particularly of the younger generations coming forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Crawford. Councillor Reid, would you like to answer some of those points that were raised?
Yes, I'll do my best, Chairman. Thank you. Councillor Collett asked where was the member involvement. And I think the answer to that is it's continuous. In every member briefing that we have, and I remember a memorable one where we saw the robots, the frameworks that people wear, the officers are getting feedback from members as to what they think of the new ideas that are coming forward. And I think the answer to your question has to be and should be that because we work closely with our officers and we're given the opportunity to comment all the time on what they're doing, hopefully, they can include accurately in these reports how we are feeling without actually having to go through and say, let's start from square one. So I think that's the answer to your question. It comes from a close working relationship with our officers that enables them to write down the things that they believe we're going to agree with. Now, councillor Taylor asked about the climate change strategy, and councillor Crawford did as well. Well, there is something like just under a thousand page report coming to the next Cabinet meeting. We discussed it. We've had a briefing on it. It is huge. And the problem that I see in that report, and I've said this to the author, is that there is so much in it that I don't think any one person can get everything out of it. It is colossal. And I did say in terms of presenting this to the public that we're going to have to break this down into six or seven sections where we present media releases or commentaries to show what we are doing in there because it is such a comprehensive report. And councillor Warwick can comment on this even better than I can. It's such a comprehensive report that I think that every councillor in this chamber is going to be mightily impressed by the comprehensive nature and the detail that is in there. And that's coming in the next cycle. So I would be very interested in councillor Taylor's and councillor Crawford's responses to that report when they see it, because I hope that they will be, as I am, mightily impressed by it. And then obviously, that will be a regular feedback to the council. And councillor House asked about the Corporate Management Framework. There is a paragraph 44, councillor House, there is a table figure two, which does go into some detail on that. Now, if you feel that that is not detailed enough, I'd be very interested to discuss that. But thought has been given to this subject, and I feel that it is covered within this report, albeit that the report has had to strike a balance between detail and usability. So I think the answer to the question is in the report, but very happy to discuss further if you want. So, members, I think the major thing that I'd say is that the work which councillor Warwick is doing and the report which is coming on climate change, I think will mightily impress everybody at this meeting. Thank you.
Right. Well, the recommendation's on page 92. When I ask those in favour of the recommendation, please to raise your hands. Those against? There are more in favour than against, so the recommendation is carried. We come now to item 14 on the agenda, which is the amendment of the Code of Conduct for members. It's page 111. And this report will be introduced presumably by councillor Tom Thacker as vice chair of the Cabinet Advisory Board.
Thank you, Chairman. Members are asked to approve a small but important addition to the Members' Code of Conduct in the section on Members and Co-opted Members' Obligations that can be found in Appendix One of the report. Paragraph 3.14 adds that members should not bully or harass any person. The Council is using the ACAS definition of bullying and harassing is defined in the Protection from Harassment Act of 1997. Thank you, Chairman.
Any questions or debate? Recommendation is on page 114. Could I see your approval? Thank you. Right, we're on item 15. There were no questions in respect of 15A, so we move to 15B to receive a report from councillor Vinod Vaughan.
Thank you, Chairman. I have nothing to add to the report and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions or debate? No, then we move on. We note the report. Item 16, the Annual Report of the Policy and Resources Select Committee. Councillor Jonathan Glenn.
Thank you, Chairman. It gives me great pleasure to present the Policy and Resources Select Committee Annual Report for 2020/21. If you have any questions about the work of any particular select committee, I'm happy to give way to the chairman of the relevant committee. And I'd like to pay tribute to all the work of the members and the facilitating Hampshire County Council officers. Thank you, Chairman.
Any questions or debate? Thank you. The report is then noted. Item 17. This will be introduced by councillor Anne Briggs as the vice... Oh, I'm sorry, there was a question.
It's on 17.
You're on 17. Well, we'll get there, just relax. Right. So, on the Annual Report of the Health and Social Care Select Committee, this is to be introduced by councillor Anne Briggs, who is vice chairman of the Health and Adult Social Care Select Committee. Councillor Briggs.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy to give the report of the Health and Adult Social Care Select Committee. I'm happy to take questions.
We may have a question. Councillor Porter?
Thank you. Can I ask councillor Briggs, and I appreciate that it's councillor Withers is running the particular scrutiny which is of Hampshire together, if she has had an update on the position of this work, please, because it appears to have stopped from a public point of view.
I'm happy to take this offline with you, councillor. I haven't the report at the moment.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Anything else? No. Come on, mouse. Take care of that report and we move on then to turn to item 18. There's some changes in the responsibility for executive functions. Councillor Maynes as leader.
Thank you, Chairman. Following my appointment at the Cabinet in May, there were one or two changes in executive functions that followed on from that. And these are listed in this document. I'd also commend the appendix to councillors generally because it does give a fairly detailed indication of which lead member is responsible for what. And that's quite useful if you get inquiries from constituents or residents as to who to go to first. So I'd just commend this to... Well, we don't need to take a vote on it, but I'm very happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Good. The report has been noted. We move on to item 19. Arrangements for the appointment to the Health and Wellbeing Board. Councillor Ferris is chairman. Will introduce this.
Thank you, Chairman. This is just to inform the council of changes to the membership of the Health and Wellbeing Board. If anyone's got any questions about them, please ask. Thank you.
Any questions? No, that's fine. We note that report. Agenda item 20A, committee report from the leader.
Well, this is a short report which you have in front of you, and I'm very happy to answer any questions associated with it.
There are no questions. Item 20B, a report from the lead member for Children's Services, councillor Roz Chad.
Thank you. I'm happy to present this report and take any questions.
There are none, so the report is noted. And we go on to the last item, which is 20C relating to the adult services and public health. And that's councillors Ferris again.
Again, happy to present the report and happy to take questions.
Are there any questions on this report? None, so the report is noted. I think that brings us to the end. I think that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance.